So hello everyone, as you can see from the title of this video, today I am here with my friend colleague and psychiatrist from UK. Doctor Pulkit to discuss about the pathway to residency in UK. Doctor Pulkit and myself have been together since our school days and you know after passing MD secretary, I started teaching and he moved on to UK. So I wanted to ask these questions myself also to him. Since long time but after I started teaching residence and interacting with residents in the country. There are a lot of residents who you know aspire to go to UK and they wish to ask. So first of all, I welcome Doctor Pulkit. Thank you so much for coming over to here and helping us.
Thank you for inviting me.
Okay, so alright, so we'll start over the session. So the session is, as you students know about, is about the residencies in UK. So before I target specific questions about it, I would like to ask Doctor Pulkit, please tell us about your journey after MD from India to UK and after completing MD, how did you proceed?
Well, after completing my MD from Saint Cheers Medical College, I was doing my capacity one year rotation in Mumbai because in Mumbai you need to do one year. And while working there, I actually did my paper A and paper B of MRC Psych. And I came to know about a thing called MTI Fellowship. So it's a medical training initiative fellowship. Because I always wanted to explore bit more and I wanted to learn more about psychiatry and the prospects of higher training in India is not much. There is just two seats in New Hands. In child psychiatry, that's what I wanted to do. So I applied for MTI Fellowship just to gain some experience of working in UK. I got shortlisted among lots of other entries all around the world. And I just, and they just applied for my visa and my GMC registration. And, and I came to UK after that. I did one and a half year to two years of that fellowship before I moved into my higher training into UK. So basically, my ticket to UK was that MTA Fellowship after my born period in Mumbai.
So how did you get to know about this MTI Fellowship? What is it all about? Can you tell us about it?
Well, as I said, it's called medically, a medical training initiative. The thing is, in United Kingdom, there is, there are lots of places that are not filled by their own residents. It could be because there is not much of recruitment. It could be because there are lots of places where nobody else wants to go. So what British have done very smartly, they have actually advertised those posts for countries from developing countries and other Commonwealth. Of course, other countries from developed countries can also apply for it, but usually they don't. So it's basically win-win for both because countries from other, students from other countries gain some experience of working in UK. Whilst people in UK get some well-trained trainees with brilliant education background in those places where no one else is wants to go. So, so that was the training initiated that actually got started one year before I went. So I came in 2016, so it got started for psychiatry in 2015. Just be mindful that MTA Fellowship has been going for other specialties for ages, but for psychiatry, it just got started recently, you can say six years back. So I came to know from one of my senior while working in Saint Cheers Medical College. And the offers aren't lucrative to me because at that point of time, working in India, I thought if I am given a chance as a fellowship to work in a different country, that sounded astonishing to me. So I said, why not? So I applied for it and because I already had given my paper A and paper B and I had good enough CV at that point with some research and clinical experience by working in game. I say G S and K U, so I got selected. So to answer the question, what is MTA Fellowship? It's a fellowship where you can work in UK for two years at the level of third-year psychiatry resident. Please make sure that you know this because if you've already done your MD or if you've already done your consultant post in India, you might need to step down when you come as an MTI fellow. Because even though I had completed my MD and I had done one year of BON, so I was actually working as an SR. But when I came as an MTA fellow, I started working as a third-year psychiatry resident. But I took that gamble. I know academically it's a bit of a step back, but I took that gamble because I wanted to learn more about child psychiatry. So I placed my demands, so to say, to my training director. I said that I am interested in child psychiatry and the only way I am going to step down in my career and come to UK is if I am given good enough chance to be inside child psychiatry. And he agreed to that. So he gave me, so you get six months post in every subspecialty. You get six months of child psychiatry, then six months of general adult or old age or crisis or whatever you want. He gave me nine months of child psychiatry and six months of learning disability. So in England, intellectual disabilities called learning disability. So I got a good enough experience of child and LD while working in UK. So that was a sellout point for me. So my advice would be for all the residents who are listening to this, this, go on Royal College website or go to Google and type MTA Fellowship Royal College of Psychiatry UK. You will come to know about the pros and cons of MTA Fellowship and how to get it. All you need to do is in around September or October time every year, they open the applications. You can just apply for it, upload your CV. And if you get shortlisted depending upon your CV, they give you a call for a Skype interview or in these sort of circumstances, it could be a Zoom interview or whatever. And over that interview, they ask you management type of questions. How you have been a leader in your, in your residency? They ask you about the clinical case and they give you a clinical scenario and you have to tell them what would you do as a trainee? And they also kind of ask you why you took psychiatry. So there is, there is, there is a layperson as well in the interview. So they just ask you general questions about what psychiatry means to you. So it's a bit, bit of a generic sort of an interview, but based on that, you get that fellowship if they feel that you're competent enough in that respect.
So this is the procedure, the application has to be made after completion of MD or during MD we can apply?
Oh, after completion of MD is always preferable. See, to be honest, they are looking for someone who is trained enough. Technically speaking, you can apply while doing MD, but Indian government and Indian education system does not allow us to do a timeout sort of a residency. It is allowed in Sri Lanka and other countries, but not in India. In India, you need to complete your MD because if you leave your MD between, go to an outside country, it's difficult for you to come back and then complete it again. So it's an unfortunate thing. If we talk, if I talk to my Sri Lankan colleagues, they have MTI in their curriculum, but in India we don't. So my advice would be complete your MD and then go for MTA Fellowship.
Can diploma candidates apply for this? DPM?
Oh, of course.
And DNB as well, yes?
Oh, of course. Anyone, if you have completed a degree, you can apply. See, they, for them, MD, DNB diploma does not matter because they do not know what these things are. All what matters is your experience. So if your guide or your supervisor is able to write that in written, that you have done two years or three years of residency, you have done all the clinical work and they give you some sort of praise about your, your clinical acumen and your leadership skills. They are happy with that. What they're going to do is they're going to reach out to your supervisor independently without your knowledge and they're going to ask your supervisor the same things that, what do they think about this training? So they do cross-check as well. They are very vigilant in that respect. But yes, all they need to do is if your supervisor is supportive, your guide is supportive, then you should not have any problem. You will definitely be shortlisted. You will get it or not, that again depends on the competition you have. So if there is someone else who has a wonderful CV, more experienced than you, MTI is getting bit more competitive nowadays as compared to when I applied. So of course, that these are the other factors, but on principle, you can apply it if you're a diploma audience.
Thank you so much. So is MTI anyways correlatable with the MRC means to apply for MTI? Do you need to have MRC cleared?
No, not at all. As I said, it gives you a weightage. But there are lots of people who apply for MTI, come to this country and then start giving their MRC psych exam. So you need to understand, MTA is just a way for British and English RC psych to fill their... Sorry. So it's just their way to fill their seats. It has nothing to do with the Royal College. Yes, it's a Royal College-driven initiative to help those recruitment, but it has nothing to do with MRC psych. But I, my advice would be that do start reading a bit about paper A and paper B while you are doing the MTA, so that when you're sitting in interview, you can at least say that your goal is to, of course, do the MRC psych exam as well.
Okay. So when do you advise for MD students when to give MRC psych exams?
See, it all depends on your plan of what you want to do in life. If your plan is to come to UK right from the start, start from the day one. If your plan is to keep it as an option while you want to explore the options within India, then I will advise just complete your MD wholeheartedly first and then think about MRC psych. I never wanted to come to UK in the first place at all. I, I was a patriot by heart. I said, I'm going to live in India. I'm going to stay in India forever. But when I saw the state of affairs that there was no higher training available or if it was available, it was scant in various different places and it was difficult for me to get into it. So I thought, why not give it a chance? So what I did was, I, I, while doing my MD, I did not do anything about MRC psych. I didn't even know MRC psych existed. No one knew at that time, to be honest. And once I completed my exam and we were given one month off before we could start our BON. In that one month time, when people were enjoying their vacations, they were going out for holidays. I, on the other hand, just sat and gave my paper A because I was fresh on my MD exams. I think that's a better way to go about it because MRC psych curriculum is different than the MD curriculum. In MD curriculum, our theory, our clinical skills are different than what we need in MRC psych. So if you're an Indian student from India who wants to do MD, just focus on that first. MRC psych is a different word altogether, which you will get if your foundations are good. The last thing you want to do is that you have one foot into MRC psych, another foot in MD and you just do not know what to do. Because if you're preparing for MRC psych, which is a completely different format, you will struggle in your MD exams and I don't want that to happen with, with anyone who is aspiring to pass their MD, MD exam. So to be, so I don't know the answer to this. The answer is your choice, but my advice would be complete your MD first before you think about MRC psych.
Can you tell me more about paper A and paper B? What are they all about?
MRC psych has three parts, a paper A, paper B and clinical skill exam, just like I mentioned. Paper A is MCQ-based exam and extended matching questions. Paper A comprises of basic sciences, basic neurosciences, you know, Kaplan's first initial chapters of basic sciences. That's pretty much what the major chunk of the paper is. Along with that, it also has classification system and psychology. And of course, psychopharmacology. So these are the first basic things that you should know as a psychiatry resident. You can give MRC psych exam anytime in your three years of residency while doing your MD. So usually, people try to give it within one year here when I'm in UK, but in India, you can give it anytime. All you need to do is just prepare your basic psychology from Morgan and King that, that you read in, in our MD or you can read Watson guidelines for psychopharmacology. You can read classification system from DAS seven ICT and of course, basic sciences from Kaplan. That's what basically I read. That's the preparation from textbooks. But as with DAMs and with other coaching systems, you know, we have, there are all coaching systems for MRC psych as well. So there are lots of MRC psych courses available online that give you, so to say, notes for all these topics. So I always advise my juniors to go through three mainly online courses that are really good. So one is called SPMM. SPMM course for CASM R C site is really, really good. If you can afford, it's really expensive, but if you can afford, please go for SPMM notes. This will give you everything and you don't need to need read any textbook, to be honest. Then there is what because Birmingham CASK course or Birmingham RC psych, I'm a, a MRC psych course. It also give you good enough questions and notes. And there is another called psych mentor. So psych mentor is for those people like me who didn't have too much money to spend. It's, it's a very, is comparatively cheaper forty, forty-five pounds, which kind of correlates to some four thousand rupees. But you get good enough questions and you get some explanations of those questions. So what I did was, I read the textbook and I did psych mentor. But if you are well-to-do, go for SPMM. So this is a preparation that you can use. Paper B again, same thing, it's MCQs and extended matching questions. But it's bit difficult in a sense that it has clinical psychiatry, biostatistics. Clinical psychiatry, we all know because we do that in our MD, but biostatistic is something that you need to learn very in, in detail. So you need, do need to know the notes. You need to have the notes. Again, the same courses that I just said, SPMM psych mentor or Birmingham course. You can choose either of them and they are brilliant in their own respect. And then comes the third part, which is the, I will not say difficult, but it's, it's a different sort of an exam, which is the clinical skill. It's called CASK, C A S C, CASK exam. Now, CASK exam is something where you have eighteen stations. There will be a patient sitting or it's not a patient, it's a role player. They are given a task. So you need to do is you need to go there, read the task and perform that task in front of that patient or role player. And then there is an examiner who will be sitting and watching your interaction. You don't talk to the examiner. All you need to do is just show your skills. Now that's a fairly difficult exam in Indian context is because in India, we do not focus on how to talk to patient. While doing my MD, I've seen even myself shouting at my patients and no one is even bothering about that because that's how sometimes we tend to do. Sometimes we are more focused on the treatment and the medication and making the diagnosis rather than our, our manners of talking to a patient, our communication skills. So it becomes a bit difficult for the people from subcontinent to score in those exams. So what I always advise my juniors is that give your paper A and paper B while you're in India because it's an MCQ basic exams and as we all know, we are all champions in MCQs. But trying to come to UK, see the system of working before you give your CASK exam. And exam resources for that, again, it's the same three courses. Usually, I'm not sure about psych mentor, but SPMM has lots of videos. And there are lots of other sources, other courses, you need to search on Google that are coming up. So they have lot, they have uploaded the videos of how to talk and there are stations which basically repeat every year. So all you need to do is you need to see those videos to see how you should do it. There are lots of CASK books called Get Through CASK. There's the one that I read. Prepare for CASK. There's another book that you can read. So have one book as a background to make your framework and then see those videos. And I think, and then of course, come to UK and talk to your patients and then you will get a hang of how to talk to a patient. And then once after doing all of that, if you give your CASK exam, then there is a high chance that you will pass. And once you pass your CASK, you are, you are given the title of MRC psych.
Okay. Thank you so much for this. Some students have asked that during residency, that textbook which we use from among Oxford, CTV, Kaplan, synopsis or Tasman. Is there any specific book which gives you more advantage towards MRC psych?
Absolutely not. People say Oxford because it's from England. Absolutely not. See, it's... We all have, we all know that there is a question bank from which the questions are made. So I will say that mostly the question that come, I'll not say mostly, but yes, there's a high chunk of those questions are repeat questions from the question bank. So if you get hold of a question bank from either of these notes, you will be in a better position. But any textbook whatsoever will give you equal amount of information. There's just one textbook that I can see that gives you a rather good advantage and that's Watson guideline for psychopharmacology because it is, it is originally originated from UK and it's based on nice guidelines, a guideline that we all use in UK to prescribe patients. So if you read that, there's a high chance that you will get more right answers as compared to if you read APA guideline or any Indian guideline of course. But apart from that, any other book you read, if you are reading about the basic sciences, it's going to give you some background information which is pretty much similar.
And regarding synopsis and CTP Kaplan, will that make a difference?
Oh, of course, CTP is, is, is way more detailed. You can't compare that. Synopsis is just, you know, what in Hindi we call jugar is just, it's, it's just a way of passing your MD exam. This is just a snapshot of the basic big book. I read CTP. I know lots of my colleagues did not. But it's all up to your choice. You know what? There are two kinds of people. One is like Pulkit Caushal who likes to read too much. One is Sachin Arora who always wanted to focus on, on, on short answers and, and, and notes. We are different personalities. So I will not say that you read CTP and if you only read CTP, you will pass. There are lots of colleagues of mine who have never read CTP and have cleared MRC psych. So it all depends on your personal choice. But as far as the depth of the knowledge is concerned, of course, CTP is going to give you more knowledge than synopsis.
Thank you. One question which has been asked by many residents, giving lab exam necessary to practice in UK as a psychiatrist?
I know this is a very common question asked to me. See, for this question, I need to first of all make you understand the basic levels where you can enter UK as a, as a clinician. So there are four ways you can enter UK. So one is lab exam. What is lab exam? Lab exam is you want to tell clinicians in UK that your ambivious is equivalent to UK's ambivious. Lean and simple. So if you've done your ambivious in, in, in India, they do not know that you have done it or not, or if you've done it, is it good enough or not? So what they want to do is they want to take your test to see if you match their standards. So in lab exam, you need to read all the twenty-one subjects that you have for your, for your ambivious. And if you pass that, they give you your GMC, which is the number that you need. GMC, General Medical Council's registration number and you need their General Medical Council's registration to practice as a, as a doctor. So that's one way of entering UK that you prepare for a lab exam and then you come here and then you tell people that, okay, see my ambivious is equivalent to your ambivious and I'm fully capable of becoming a doctor. Will you become a psychiatrist? Of course not. Because if you have blast your lab exam, you're just an MBV student or an MBV graduate for them. Nothing more than that. So, so what you need to do is if you have blast your lab exam, then you need to enter into the training for psychiatry and then you need to do your higher training for psychiatry and then you become a consultant. But that's one way of entering. The second way of entering is you pass your MRC psych exams. What is MRC psych? MRC psych exam basically tells you that my MD psychiatry is equivalent to your MD psychiatry. That's basically what it tells. So once you pass your MRC psych exam and you enter UK, you are given GMC, but then you can then directly apply for higher training. You need to understand that in UK, you need to do six-year psychiatry training to become a consultant. Three years of core training where you study about general psychiatry in a various different subspecialities. And then you need to do three years of higher training, which translates to DM in India. So you need to do three years of higher training and then you become an established consultant psychiatrist. So that's the second way of entering. The third way of entering UK is MTI that I just described. But if you want to do your MTI, you need, if you want to gain your GMC registration, giving exam is too much of a hassle for you. You want an easy life. You do not want to study your MBBS exam or want to redo your MD exam. All you can do is just apply for this MTI fellowship. You will be given an online interview and if they find you good enough, then they will call you and they will give you the GMC right away. So no need, no hassle of giving any exam and there you go, you have a GMC in your hand. And then you start working as a, as a third-year psychiatry training. But then you have to understand that is an MTI, you can only work for two years and then you have to have to go back to your original country. So MT is a temporary phase, but it does let you work as a psychiatrist. And the fourth and the most difficult is what we call CESR. Article fourteen. So CESR route is basically they compare six years' worth of your documents of, of whatever you have done in your residency as well as consultancy. You need six-year experience. They compare that evidence to their evidence. It's a lot of paperwork and then if they find that you have enough experience, then they just give you the consultancy. No need for giving any exam, no need for giving any interview. All you need to do is just show your paperwork. It sounds lucrative, but as we all know that in India, they do not do that sort of paperwork. We do not have any account of the patients that we have seen. I mean, in Saint Cheers, I, I've seen so many patients. I don't have record for any. I don't have, I have any record of my supervisor telling me that I've, I've done good when I was seeing, seeing those patients. So because of this lack of documentation in, in Indian MD system, CESR route becomes the most difficult one. So I will say, don't go for that option. It's, it's really difficult. But there are four ways of coming to UK as a psychiatrist. Lab exam, MRC psych exam, MTI and CESR route. But a short answer to your question is, is lab exam necessary to give to practice in UK as a psychiatrist? Absolutely not. I never gave a lab exam and I'm practicing as a psych, I'm practicing as a psychiatrist.
Thank you so much for elaborating it. Next question is, practicing in India after a degree from UK? What are your pros and cons from your perspective?
I think I'm not the right person to ask that question. I can answer that if ever I come back to India and I see what my status is. All I can say is that you can of course do that, but you need to understand that Indian government does not recognize UK's degrees and it's the vice versa. UK government doesn't recognize India's degrees. There was a conflict back, many, many years back. Once upon a time, they used to, but not anymore. Pakistan has a very fairly good deal because in there, MRC psych is to recognize as a, as a degree, but unfortunately, India doesn't. So if you're going back to India after UK, there is a very low chance that you will go to the government system. Of course, private system is open. Private, big multinational organizations do and recognize and message like as a, as a nice, good, good thing to have under your, under your belt. I just want to specify one thing such and because there's some issue with this question. MRC psych is not a degree and this is a misconception that lots of people have. It's not a degree. MD is a degree. Diploma is a degree. Certificate also is a, so to allow some level. Sorry, diploma is not a degree, it's a diploma, but still it is in that genre, but, but MRC psych is just a membership. A membership that lets you do the higher training in UK. It has no importance in UK whatsoever. Because if you're an MRC psych psychiatrist in UK, you are a half-cooked psychiatrist because after MRC psych, you need to do three years more of training to become a psychiatrist. Yeah, a specialist. So and then lots of people write that in a degree form that I have MRC psych degree. It's not, it's just a membership. After doing your MRC psych degree, our MRC psych membership exam, if you pass, you need to pay Royal College some four hundred sixty pounds every year to maintain that. So it's an expensive, expensive membership. So not only you pay for all these three exams, which are hell expensive, but you also keep paying for your MRC membership if you want to write MRC psych in front of your, in front of your name. Uh um um membership, if you want to write M R C psych in front of your, in front of your name. Um so if you go back to UK, just have that, uh so go back to India, just have that in mind. That if you're practicing in India, you need to give UK some amount of money, somewhere around four. Forty thousand pounds per year of four four hundreds of odd pounds every year to maintain that M R C psych. Um and in in front of your name. Um so it's a bit expensive. Also, G M C, um once you leave UK. Uh and go to India, you still need to keep paying G M C if you want to maintain it. But if you never want to go back to India or to UK, of course, you can forfeit it and then. You're not recognized as a doctor in in UK because you have just given um you forfeited your G M C. So practicing in India, um good prospects, I believe in private practice, no prospects if in government. And um but and then again, I'm not a best person to answer this question.
You'll be able to answer it, I think, over the coming years.
Hopefully.
Okay. So other than child psychiatry, what other fellowships are available post M B?
Um other than child psychiatry, okay, so. So the the thing with fellowship is again, there's something, there's some alteration that I need to do in this question.
Just higher training, higher training.
Higher training, yeah. So fellowship is a word that we use in India and United States, not much in UK. Because in UK, we have just M T I fellowship.
And that's common, I think. That's.
And that's, that's common. That's basically.
So higher studies, I mean, like.
Higher studies. So there's child psychiatry, old age psychiatry, general adult psychiatry. Uh crisis uh treat intervention and home-based treatment, uh medical psychotherapy. And then forensic psychiatry, which is very, very popular. And then there is a combination of all these. So you can have dual training, which is you can do general adult plus. Um uh old age, for example. And then the last one is learning disability. As I said initially, uh in England, intellectual disability is called learning disability. Uh so learning disability uh is the seventh and and the last one, the last year, last of the higher specialty. So out of these seven, you can do anything.
Anything about psychosexual disorders?
Absolutely not.
No, because one student has asked this query because I don't think so there's much fellowships available on that in India as well or higher.
No. See, you can always have a special interest. See, they they do prefer. Um those trainees who have special interest in doing something different. So for example, I like child psychiatry. But I have a special interest in infant psychiatry. Uh it 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 might sound bit uh. Uh odd because in India, we do not even know much about child psychiatry. How come an infant can have a child psychiatry problem? But there is a specialty and I have some special interest in that. So I keep reading about it. Um and I keep uh discussing about it. And if I ever get a chance, I might actually practice it in coming few years. If I ever get a chance. Right now, we don't have funding for that. So if you're doing a general adult psychiatry, but you have a special interest in psychosexual. You can always pursue that in UK. You will be given enough opportunities. When you're doing this higher training uh in in UK, like I am doing. You are given one day a week where you can do whatever you want. Uh that's what we call special interesting. Uh so uh I'm doing my medical education uh degree in that special interesting. Uh but if you're interested in psychosexual medicine or psychosexual psychiatry um disorders. Then you could just utilize that one day to study about that. You can take some course. Um you can do some online course. That is not from this country, but some other countries, but you can do whatever you want to pursue that. But as such, from my knowledge, there is no fellowship available. If there is, and if you find it good enough, please keep searching. Because even I'm not the epitome of all the knowledge, but if, but from my own knowledge, I don't think there is.
But you gave us a new term today, infant psychiatry. You know, people are knowing about child psychiatry. I think next time we'll talk, you will tell me about neonatal psychiatry as well. Hopefully.
You never know, no, you never know, yeah.
Okay, so thank you so much. So we have come to the end of our question session. So I'm looking for the final words of wisdom from your side, any general advice to residents, what you wish to give?
Well, the general advice would be, and this is coming from um. The. Flood of questions that I get on my Facebook and my WhatsApp every day. And and I'm just culminating all of that and I'm just giving as a general advice and that would be. Um just because your friend or just because your colleague has come to a Western country. Uh and thus you also want to come here should not be the reason to come to UK. So I'm just gonna talk about UK. I'm not gonna talk about States because I've never worked there. Um so if ever you want to pursue Royal College exams or you want to pursue M T I. Just ask why you want to do it. Um this why is very important because sometimes people do get that. Um rain, rain, that, okay, so everyone is going, so let me be just part of it. Um the things might look uh uh lucrative from from that far. But uh the struggles are pretty much the same in any country you go. If you feel that uh by coming to UK, uh you will get a a sort of an atmosphere. Where where the life will completely change for you. That's not going to happen. Okay? We work in a system called N H S and it has its own pros and cons. Um so ask your why, why you want to come to UK? If the answer is that you want to study more, you want to gain some more knowledge, please apply for this. It's a wonderful place to learn something new about psychiatry. As I said, there are seven subspecialities that we do not find in India. But if your why is that you want to earn more and hence you want to come to UK, please don't, please don't. Because the thing is. Um if you earn in pounds, you also spend in pounds. People forget that. What they do is they ask me how much I earn and then they multiply that from hundred and they convert that into rupees. And then they feel uh ecstatic about it. But do understand that, that if I'm earning in pounds and spending in pounds as well. So as a net, it's not that, it's not that uh fleshing, so so to say. Um the the one country and I've I've friends from most of the world now because all on the world. I've 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 had so many connections uh now in last four years. And what I've learned is that if you want to earn more, India is the best place. And you will find, find it surprising. Yes, COVID has caused some dent on it, but overall, I will say. Private practice in India is is much, much more rewarding as well as financially is its concern as compared to. UK or any other country as a matter of fact. Another thing is, if you want to come to UK, if you feel that it's a Western country and anything that is uh uh from UK is better than than ours. It's is completely, again, rubbish. Um we have a different sort of a system. They have a different sort of a system. We have a knowledge-based system. They have a clinical uh communication-based system. Um so there are lots of times when trainees come to UK, say, uh to say that, well, we want to work in a better system. Um but when they come here, they feel disappointed. And there's always that cognitive dissonance in their mind that, should I stay here? Should I go back? And that is really troubling. I've seen so many trainees who come here for wrong reasons and then they suffer badly. They they feel low. I've seen them taking antidepressants. And that really hurts me that, you know. Someone should have told them that this is, this is not a heaven that they're seeking. This is a different system. If your, if your why is very strong, that you want to learn more, you will get through it, you will sail through it. Uh but if you're, if you're coming here for the wrong reasons or different reasons, then you might struggle. Uh but everyone is different. Um so see for yourself, M T I gives you a nice taste. And that's the reason why I always say, uh even though there is a step down in your career, M T I. But it gives you that sort of a taste of of how you will uh get used to this sort of a new culture. Uh and if you like it, go ahead, uh come as a high training. If not, you can always go back and and keep working as a, as a M B psychiatrist. Or diploma or whatever.
Excellent advice, Doctor Pulket. What a genuine and honest advice. So finally, before winding up. Uh as you know, that I'll need your blessings for my new course for the residents. I'm starting tomorrow. Or in eighth of January. So it's about child psychiatry, being inspired by yourself. So I have started my part in teaching the M D students just the basics for child psychiatry. Of course, I'll include Synopses and C T P both after your advice. And uh I'm starting this. I need your blessings for this course and all the listeners here. So we have hundred plus psychiatry residents. And I would like to tell you that I would surely invite Doctor Pulket once again if he gets time to talk to all of you in this course. And he'll guide us. So Doctor Pulket, anything?
Well, sure. I mean, like, good luck, guys. I am, it's a wonderful initiative. I know that child psychiatry is not that much covered in our. Today, M D curriculum. Um as far as teaching is concerned, of course, there are lots of places where you do get clinical experience. But I I think it's it's a noble thing Sachin you're doing and please uh continue with that. As I said, I would have liked to help you, help you, but uh the things are crazy in my personal life as well as you know. So I won't be able to give you a exact date, but definitely I would like to be associated with it if at all I get time. Uh but I'm sure our trainees are going to uh really, really um. Uh they will be really getting a wonderful help by this initiative. So good luck with that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Doctor Pulket. So here we are at the end of the session with the thank you note to you. And I hope the residents would be very much enriched with their knowledge regarding UK. And uh I'm sure we are expecting a lot more queries even in the future. Thank you so much.
No problem at all. Pleasure.
Thank you. Okay.